The pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the flag.
Which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any changes to the agenda? Okay, none. Public comments, one. Would you like to invite people to make comments, please?
Yeah, of course. So for the digital audience, we have the participation policy on the screen. It's policy B E D H. Just make sure you're familiar with that before making any sort of public comment. If you would like to make a public comment, you can do so by using the hand raised feature should be located at the bottom of your screen tablet phone. Wherever you're viewing us from, you press that, we will see a little hand, I'll see that and then we can acknowledge you that way. And then if you wanted to use first name, last name and town of residence. Thank you. And we do also now have John in attendance, so full board.
So do you have any comments now?
I'm not seeing anything at this time.
Okay, so let's move on to the superintendent's report.
Okay, well, this is a busy time of year. And so I've put in writing on the superintendent's report just some dates. You can go on to the website at www.sau47.org and go to the calendar section and the live calendars will give you. You can scroll and search and see what school is doing what, but right here as the board, you know, for an easy view is to see, all right, where, where do I want to be? Where do I have to be? The school board is generally all in, all present during the 10th, which is the C H S graduation. That graduation will be held at the athletic field. I think we will be facing kind of a different direction so that some of the overflow seating can be in the back. So we have more seating for families. We'll have some staging on the field for the the graduates themselves. And so the last days of schools are there, but Ringe Memorial School fifth grade finale. And the Jeffrey Great School fifth grade recognition, call them different things, but they are relatively the same. You can see the timing there, they occur on the same evening. So going to both is difficult, a couple of us do. So Mr. Dustin and I tend to start in one and then go to the other one. Obviously, we start in Bringe because it starts sooner. And then we go to the Jeffrey Great School, one which ends a little bit later. And then the eighth grade celebration, which is supposed to be all weather permitting. It should take place right out here actually on the front lawn of the high school, middle school entrance. And so that's where they plan on having that graduation. So take a look at those, kind of see what's your schedule will allow you to do. Not everyone has been able to come to the eighth grade celebration in the past. Several do. There's usually a split for the elementaries and then, of course, most are at the C H S graduation. You actually get an opportunity, everyone here can be up handing out, well, not won't be handing the diplomas out, but you'll be shaking people's hands as they come across the stage afterwards. There are tickets for the graduations. You don't have to have tickets, you're already in.
Did you get one? I did get one, did you guys? Yeah.
Okay.
Our ticket says that it's for us and a guest.
Okay.
It was really helpful last year.
Perfect.
Okay. Legislative update. It's been a busy year, but some things that were are really centric to the educational scene is that there is a social studies requirement for graduation. So we have to make them a test in, inside this school for high schoolers. They need to have that in order to graduate, need to, it's competency based assessment. Need to pass seventy percent or higher is what the language says that was signed in by Governor Sununu. Health, wellness, finance, really the health and wellness. I was reading through it and the health and wellness seem to be pretty typical of what it has been. But I believe that finance, personal finances, the add on that is different. I don't think that has been in a requirement in curriculum. And this is pushing for making sure that if it's not a specific class, it's actually, it's definitely within the curriculum somewhere or in multiple places. That teaching permit that personal finance is important. Base coverings, there was an attempt to prevent schools from requiring base coverings. That was vetoed by the governor, believing that local control should dictate how that would go. Parent bill of rights, this one was had a lot to do with making certain that the school provided certain types of communication to families, to parents in particular. The notable part that has been more on the controversial side has been the focus on gender expression and identity. And that was vetoed. And then youth risk behavior survey currently people can opt out of the youth risk behavior survey. And this would be the language in it and it's not passed or anything at this point in time still in committee. But it would be more of an opt in, you can, I mean, there's a lot more to it, but if you kind of, that's the, that's a summarizing of it. And actually HB fourteen thirty-one and HB sixteen thirty-nine do have some relation with one another. If you read some of the articles that are out there having to do with the parent bill of rights, they actually reference the data from the youth risk behavior survey to either be pro or con, you know, the, the bill, the parents' bill of rights. And then state assessment data, we've been busy across all the schools, taking the New Hampshire SAS, that's in math, English, language, arts. And also in three of our grades, science. I have been able to see the preliminary data so far and we have seen growth in most of our areas. Not necessarily where we want to be everywhere, but definitely some positive growth and it seems to be fairly consistent. That being the case, we haven't delved deeply into it and that needs to happen. And beyond the fact that we're working on in the S A U, getting the software to be able to do some very deep data dives and make sure we have a that dashboard by the start of next year. In general, that is also hopefully not static, but also it will kind of be more dynamic in its approach. We will also want to actually have conversations at the board level regarding student assessment data and how, what we're doing to move forward. So we've talked a lot about that in the education committee about the things we're doing and the work that's happening and the culture that's shifting. But we haven't spent a lot of time talking about outcomes. And so this is really a discussion between Kim and Mr. Dustin as to when this could happen, whether it be July and August. And you might talk about it more during the board reports. But I would imagine that within the next couple of cycles, student learning assessment data is going to be probably a very hot topic. And that's what I have for this evening.
Okay, thank you, Ruben. Does anybody have any questions for Ruben?
I just have a quick question. So in regard to our schedule of celebrations.
Yes.
If we if we are planning to attend, let's just say the J G S celebration. Do we need to let someone know that there's a seat available for us or let, should we, is the assumption that everyone's going and just let them know if you're not going to be there?
Well, I think it's always nice to let the principal know. But we typically have had the room anyway. Both, all of them are planned to be outside, but we do have gym backups. If it's in J G S, that gym is smaller.
Yeah.
And that can be, that can be tougher. If it's in Ringe, they have plenty of space. That's not going to be an issue. And they expect that we're likely to come, you know, between five and seven board members are going to be at the high school graduation. And between, you know, three and seven, you know, probably at the, it seems to be the average around there or the range for the eighth grade celebration.
I have a question, just not related to what you're doing, but something that is coming up. Is there, was there any changes that needed to happen to the reopening framework? Because wasn't there a deadline in June? To have any edits or updates for the coming years? Go with reopening framework in place?
Yeah, I don't have all the details on that. I do believe that there is going to be another, there's going to be another reopening guideline or framework that has to be done, whether it be just revising it a little bit or doing the same thing. That has a lot to do with the ESAR funds. Because we have to update them every so often. So I have to, I think either in this month or next month, I have to put in another spreadsheet and with explanation of all that we've done for asking for input on what type of program we want to have and then what we're spending on different programs and how, and how we're meeting certain objectives and so forth.
Right.
So that, the second part of that is, do you have a reopening framework and is it housed on the Department of Education?
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. I, I thought the deadline for that was in, was like June twenty second or something like that. But I didn't, I wasn't sure what the status was on our later, if there was any meetings.
I will, I will look into that. I don't have a set date and that has been sent to me anyway.
Any other questions? John, Daisy?
No.
All right. All right, let's move on to consent agenda. Changes to consent agenda? Okay, if not, can I have a motion?
I'd make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I second it.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Knows abstain, motion carries seven zeros zero. Okay, so let's. Okay, we, we've approved the consent agenda. I want to add right now to the agenda, the S A U exempt salary increases. So can someone make a motion to add that to the agenda?
I'll make the motion to add discussion of the salary increases for
Admin and S A U exempt, admin directors and S A U.
Admin directors and S A U.
And I will second that motion.
All right, all in favor of the motion?
No.
So we have Daisy? Okay, so we have a motion that carries six zero, six one zero, correct?
Right.
Six one zero with Paul voting no. Okay, so let's take that agenda item regarding discussion of the S A U exempt, non-exempt and administrator wage increases. Discussion.
Like I was saying before, I just don't. Some of those were upwards of ten percent pay increases. I understand we have a reduction due to dropping the athletic director to a trainer position, which saves a little bit on the budget. But we're already stretching our budget for next year and the total increase of that was what, a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars? And we also have had to make drastic cuts and changes for our budget next year by laying off multiple teachers. And by changing how our children or the students are going to high school by switching that to block schedule to accommodate the reduction in force that we had to do. And now we're going to go and give substantial raises to some of these, some, some, not saying it's not deserved, some admin positions. What message does that send to the teachers? Were they the frontline teaching these children? And we just laid off multiple people and I just, I don't think it's the right thing to do.
Any other discussion?
Yes.
This is John McCarthy. Paul, I'd like to say I think you make some good points. And I appreciate your comments. And in thinking about this, I've come around to believe that well, two things really. One, I think our teachers, you know, I, I do deserve more. I'd love to be able to give them more. I just don't think we're in a financial position to do it. Most of the salary increases are either less than what the teachers are getting on a percentage basis or the same, but some of them are higher. And as you point out, Paul, some of them are, you know, several of them are quite a bit higher. However, I think we need to give Ruben the tools that he needs to keep a professional staff in place. And the positions where the increases are higher are positions where we have some very good people who are being paid less than the standard for people in those positions. And for that reason, despite the good points that you make, I, I would say I'd have to support this.
I can give some clarification. I don't have a right to vote on this. But that dollar amount includes also the S A U non-exempt. So all the hourly staff within the S A U as well, which is quite a few individuals.
I have to counter a little bit. But you said Paul, because it was such a, it really was a vague thing to say, we had to let go of so many staff. And what I saw was the exact people we're talking about, the admin working so that we let, we saw an incredible amount of people able to stay through creativity. And through a real open communication of what can we do to make this work? And I don't have the exact numbers. I thought, okay, let me just see if I can go through the school board meetings and know exactly how, how many people we actually had to let go because of the budget.
There was like two at Conan, four at the middle school and then two at Ringe.
Four, two and one. Yeah, so positions for here in this school and then which resulted in no one having to lose a job at this point in time. And then
So that two is down to zero there. Is that what you're saying?
The, the four here, all people who were even possibilities of, of moving along are now have signed contracts here.
They've relocated to a different position.
Or the same position because of just natural attrition, exactly natural. Same thing at J G S and same thing at R M S. Actually, we need to hire more at J G S. We're in better position at the other two schools.
So, so to say, we're, we're giving money to people at the cost of our teachers. I'm not, I don't see that.
I'm not saying that we're giving it at the cost of the teachers. I'm just saying that we have had a reduction in force. Because we have, we've, we've, whether through natural attrition or layoffs, which he's, we've, we've been fortunate. We've been able to save as many jobs as we can. But we've also been strapped for cash on our next budget already and we have even, the year hasn't even started yet. So that, that was my, but I'm sorry to interrupt.
And, and again, I'm gonna, I'm gonna counter that. It wasn't fortunate. It was skill. The people that we have here are skilled, they're professionals and they care for the people around them and they, this was hard work. It was hard one. It, you know, you know, more than ever, I think that we need to keep our good staff, you know, and to really, and to, and to recognize. And all year, we've been able to look at different groups of our employees and say, here's what we can do to help this group now. Okay, who needs, yeah, this is, okay, let's focus on this group. This has been too long. Let's get, let's up this one. Yeah, we've been able to find that in increments. It wasn't an all at once. Everybody, let's just do this. It was, it was, here's the next thing. Let's look at this closer and see what we can do. I, I'm, I'm seeing an incredible team really working our funds to the best advantage. And if this team found a way to be able to make this last piece happen, I guess I'm all for it.
Any more discussion? Okay, I'll, I'll give my two cents. From a teacher's perspective, if I look at the salaries that the teachers got relative to their C B A, the average is four to one, but there are many teachers who've got significantly more than that as a percentage. Even though dollar amount may have been more or less. I think the way that we arrived at our current F Y twenty-three budget was to include everything in there except the cuts that we made for salary purposes. And I shouldn't say for, for default purposes.
Right.
And when we made those cuts, what we looked at is we changed from a seven period day to a block schedule in high school. Okay, which saves, which reduced four positions, but not really people.
Right.
And with similar things happened with both elementary schools. Where we ended up, I think losing, and I believe the neighborhood was four positions, was it more?
Three, three at the elementary schools, but there were also from a special ed standpoint where additions of, which still need to be filled. Co-teachers, but even through attrition and callbacks from people who are ripped and so forth, we're all, those people are all back in.
So in terms of actual people, we haven't lost anybody. Is that what you're saying?
That's correct.
Okay. So I think we're being fair as we can be to all of our employees. And we're still faced with the fact that we have a lack of ability to hire based on the salaries that we're paying and offering. And we also have to retain teachers and administrators. So from, from my perspective, I believe that what we're trying to do is, is do everything we can to retain our teachers, retain our staff and retain our administrators, directors and S A U employees. And to me, I think that if, since this is still in the budget for twenty-three, I, I think that this is a reasonable salary increases that are put forward. Like I said, if I look at just the admin piece alone, all right, it's, it's only three point four percent as compared to four, that's an average, as compared to four point one for the teachers. So I'm okay with that. I think the, the difference where we see the big percentages is in the
There was like two or three of them that were just really high.
What we're seeing, the big percentage increase is in the non-exempt, excuse me, the non-exempt, is that correct?
The S A U non-exempt would have had regularly the largest.
And if we look at the dollar amount, we're only talking about twenty-eight thousand dollar increase. And it's already budgeted for. So I'm inclined to, to support the superintendent. Because as John says in that, if I'm going to hold him accountable and want to give him the tools to do the job, this happens to be the tools to do the job, then I think it's the right thing to do, just my opinion.
Just to share some, you know, some thought process behind this as well is that when we look at we, we always look at things from a merit standpoint when it comes to this, this team of individuals, both from the non-exempt and exempt. And we right now are operating with a very, very strong team. If I were to show you the accomplishments that we had this year, we just never, we haven't had as many, very interestingly in years past, this has been very neat to see and the team coming together. But there are also the realities of various positions that you know, in our, the market value is, is increasing in different places. You know, secretaries are one of those, you know, certainly anything with, with business technology, you know, so forth, those things And so some of it's keeping pace so that you don't get into a situation where you're a couple of years also like, oh, we didn't do the right, you know, increase at that point in time. So now we either are faced with having to do a much larger increase down the road. You know, there's a couple of these positions, if you were to lose those individuals, it would cost you a lot more to either rent. And I've looked into it already. So we have the backup plans if ever need to, but to have outside organizations come in and, and help support the system. A system that they really don't own. But they'll do the job and they'll do it fine. It just costs this or go more money that way. So I view it as, I wouldn't say a cost savings. I would say it's just the way to make sure that we are steady with our approach to budgeting. This year was just a very different year. Normally we wouldn't see the inflation like we have seen it and so forth. And, and that has impacted as well.
Any more discussion?
But to your point, I think Paul's right, you know, we have to, we have to look at all of our staff, our, our staff, this was a really, really hard year. I would say that it's harder year this year than the previous two years for a wide array of reasons. Every, every place it was. You know, our special ed staff was short, so I had the entire S A U into the schools constantly working with behavioral situations and other situations and doing case management and so forth on top of their jobs. And so it's great. They know what they're doing, which is helpful. And we, we hire people who want to be in the schools and not just be separate from the schools. So that's important. We, we do have that, but it has been a very difficult year for everyone. I'm proud of what the board has done with the generous, say, work that we did this year. I thought it was a good move. I think that's, that's very helpful. And I thought we had good negotiations with the teachers as well. So I think but it's always difficult to talk about finances because it is, we just, you know, we rely on the taxpayers and it, and it comes at a cost.
Being on the finance committee is just seeing how close we are this year and knowing that we're already not in a good position for the start of next year, you know.
One thing I keep thinking about though is that this, these wage increases are below the inflation rate, right?
Well, the industry standard, every wage increase this next couple of years is probably coming below the inflation rate.
It's true, it's, but it's significantly below. And what would it cost us if we had to bring in a new employee? Because these people are so qualified and so capable that they would be snapped up in a second. And I hope they're not listening because I don't want to give them any ideas, but probably someplace much better funded. And then some, we'd be hiring someone else at a higher cost, you know.
Or finding someone less qualified.
Right, or fi- finding someone right out of school and less qualified.
No, I, I don't disagree that we do have, we have a good group, right?
Yeah.
Like it's, it's tough.
It is tough. I hear you. And I, and I really appreciate what your statement about. You know, we don't want to be like a corporation, not that we are, but like where the CEOs make so much money and then the people who are actually doing the work get paid a fraction of that. We don't want to be that. We are not that structure. But we do need to, we need this team in place so that we can make it through this, make it through this year. Be crazy to think about starting with new employees. I don't think we could do it.
Further discussion? Okay, does someone want to make a motion? Okay, does someone want to make a motion?
What is the motion? Exactly.
Someone has to make a motion to approve the. Admin director and exempt and SAU non-exempt salary increases.
Didn't we, we do that before the discussion?
No.
That was to add it to the agenda.
Okay, I will make the motion to approve the salary increase for. Me out here. For exempt and non-exempt and administrator wage increases.
I will second that motion. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Then further discussion. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
All those opposed, nay?
Nay.
Any abstentions? Motion carries six, one, zero. Okay. Now we're moving on to policy review. We have the first reading of GBDC, GBCD. Okay, and we have JEC manifest educational hardship. To rescind the policy. Would you like to speak to either of these, Lisa?
Sure. Both of these are revisions that the New Hampshire School Board Association has made. We did not, you know, we, we actually have fairly updated policies on both. But they have organized with their lawyers and made a few revisions to it. And so please do read through, there's not a lot we can change. These are documents that are, yeah, the. This is, the GBCD is required by law. And I believe the. I'm trying to, I'm actually. So the second one, I'm still looking for where that piece, the JEC manifest hardship. That needs to be rescinded. And I'm trying to look through my notes to see our discussions on that. When was that? That wasn't our last? Thank you.
So that was added, I talked to Ruben, that needs to be removed because you guys had approved JCA. I believe it was a few meetings ago, and that policy combined JCA and JEC, so this speaks. This is now conflicting with the policy that you guys have approved, so this needs to be removed.
That's right, I remember when we had that conversation of trying to find it, perfect, yeah.
Okay, do we need another reading under which then?
No, I think, I think you have to rescind it, you have to.
Right.
Did you accepted the up-to-date one? This one was either that or you change it to mimic the other one.
So I, we just see a motion to rescind the JEC.
Yeah.
I motion to rescind the JEC.
I'll second.
The motion is second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstaining, motion carries seven, zero, zero. Okay, on the board committee updates. Before we get started with board committee updates, I just would like to mention that only create the minutes. That. Someone needs to send the minutes to Nick, because I was online today looking for committee minutes. And they're not as update as, the, the, what's online is not as up to date as the minutes I've seen.
And I do have a lot that I need to add in at this point. People have been starting to send those, and so I will work on that, hopefully. After graduation season.
I think Nick needs an assistant.
With that in mind, I, so I'm only sending them to Nick. Should I be sending them to John as well? Should I be sending them to the whole, like, who should I, should I send them to the committee members? Right now, the precedence for me has only been to send them to Nick, but what'd be the best practice?
I thought you were sending them to the committee members, too.
I never have or haven't. Or haven't been on a committee that's been doing that. So that's, that would be new to me. I'd be perfectly happy for my two committees that I'm writing for to do that.
So. I would think that what we want to do is whoever creates the minutes would send them to the committee. For their review, and if the committee's okay with it, send it to them.
Okay.
Does that make sense to anybody, everybody?
So you're just sending this people on that committee?
Sorry?
So they, like, finance committee, she, she would just send it to the both of us.
Yeah.
And then we would all say, yay, nay? Okay, yeah, it makes sense to me.
I don't know if you guys want me to check in with the School Board Association on this or not, but based on my understanding. We do wanna be careful about the ways that we're communicating, even at a committee level via email. Because if you've established a committee in which you have, you know, three board members in each of these committees, and then you're sending out minutes. And then you're having conversations via email to approve or not approve, that may constitute an online meeting. Because those committees are designed to function similarly to the board, similar in the way that we wouldn't send out the minutes ahead of time. Via email, have you guys approve them via email, we approve them via. Agenda.
Because it would be a quorum of a committee.
Yeah, cuz you, if you send it out to the committee, and then you have a bunch of back and forth saying, well, I want this changed, I want that changed. Or even, no, this is good, we all approve this, that might constitute some form of online committee meeting.
So please do that, please check with the.
Don't we have emails where we, you'll send an email, and then Charlie will have a question, is that any different?
If the question is whether or not it's a quorum of a committee.
Right, but when he sends an all-hands email to the entire board, and then you have a question, is that any different from? The three-person having a question?
But he might, he might ask a question by himself, for instance.
Right.
Like, we're not gonna have a conversation amongst seven.
Yeah, the concept is, you know, more about the quorum, and, you know, the meeting.
Yeah. In, in my other.
Still new to it.
Right, in, in my other committees, we would never, like, we could send the minutes to the committee, but we would never just, like, approve them via. The email, or via the, that would be for the next meeting, like.
Yeah.
Like we're doing here, like, here's our, here's our minutes from last meeting. I'm not sure why we'd go back and forth and change things.
Yeah, like, if you wanted to send it out as like a notification, like, I think that would be fine. But that's also why I, I usually use a BCC system when I send an email to everybody. Just to prevent that even accidental reply all, and then there becomes like potentially a chain of emails. There's not, there's not anything.
So let me state it differently. If you have minutes, send them to the team members so that they have them for the next meeting to.
Yes.
Approve if necessary. They can argue about what they want in them or not.
I like it.
Okay?
And the first part of the minutes of the next one would be, they argued. After argument.
After argument, okay. All right, on to committee updates. Let's start with the education committee.
Education committee will resume in July, since June is quite busy. So that's the update.
That's the update? Facilities? John?
Uh, facilities is scheduled to meet the twentieth, I believe. Yes, the twentieth, two weeks from today. And I don't think we really have any updates. We did meet at the end of last month. And actually, I don't think any minutes have been sent out, and I think that's my fault. But I will get to them before the next meeting.
Okay, the finance committee, Matt, on the twentieth of May, and we discussed the, the current. Surplus and where it was gonna be spent, and I think we ended up talking about sixty-six K and. Food, where we had fifty-five K. It was eleven, eleven K over the revenue. So we had revenue of sixty-six K. Which was above the fifty-five K that we should have had.
We're allowed to carry, what, three months?
Yeah.
Of revenue.
Cash flow, we had some cash, cash flow issues, but we were able to put off. Some of the, since it put off, we were able to delay the, the payment until after June tenth. Which was. A spot of two-week delay that we had to make. The next meeting is in on June sixteenth. Policy, Lisa?
Yes, um, policy met on the nineteenth, and we reviewed the. A lot, that was a long meeting. We reviewed JFAB and are still talking about that. And we are sending that out to finance and education committees to kind of take a look at. So we emailed the people involved with that to have that introduced and discussed. And we talked about this. JB CD that we just voted, or that we're, have our first reading on, and. The impetus for that is that New Hampshire School Board Association has sent out a recently updated list of. Specifically required by law policies that they've updated, but also some others that, some of them we have, some of them we don't have. So it kind of throws policy into a, an area where we wanna really delve into each of them and just see. What's best practice for us as well. So we definitely take their recommendations, but it's, it's been interesting.
Thank you. School board goals?
Yeah, oh, and policy's next meeting is on June sixteenth at four thirty. Board goals, for that one. We met on May twenty-sixth, and we were. Presented with more information about the draft that we have, the strategic goals. And this is a really exciting, dynamic, exhaustive document. And one of the goals for the goals committee, or one of the goals for Ruben and the group creating this, is to have a. Cohesive draft to present to the board in August. And, and it's pretty, pretty cool. I mean, it feels, you know, we've been, in goals, we meet every three months. And, and I got to be on it last year as well, so I've been able to see the progression of things that have already been erased from this. Strategic plan document because they've been successfully completed and new things added on, so, and yet, nobody's really seen it. Like, this is such a dynamic thing that it's, that it's moving too fast, literally, for, for all this review, so. They have to stop, and they have to actually write it and get it all in place, and then. I think you guys will be pretty excited to see what the stuff happening. So our next meeting is not until August twenty-fifth. Let me write that, just make, double-check that since you're writing that.
Uh, yeah, I'm happy to handle that one, I guess, unless John or Daisy wants to speak to it.
No, Nick, you go ahead, please.
Okay, so yeah, we finally met after a really long time. We met on the twenty-fifth. We had a small group in attendance, but we had a lot of good conversation. First half of the meeting was devoted to catching everybody up. Because we hadn't met since August, just all the different things that were going on. We had talked about how the website, the app were going, some of the traffic reported there online. Some other work that we had to do. I spent a lot of time talking about the policy manual update. Which I'm happy to give more information to the policy committee, because I have made it pass kind of the first major hurdle in that process. Talking about working with students. Live streaming, so on and so forth. Then ultimately, we started to talk about this idea of. Committee was formed a couple of years ago for a very specific purpose. We've met that purpose. Do we need to continue to have a communication committee? Because the goal has been met. Decision was made by the members there to end the current iteration of the communication committee. But to start a new version of the committee. So we discussed membership for that committee to make sure that there's a better, more equal representation. Of, you know, staff, parents, people of different levels. The goal would be to meet quarterly, and we want to try to be a more. Proactive and perhaps forum-based committee, in which we would take a topic of interest. We would say, okay, the meeting for the first quarter is about the website. So we're gonna have a presentation on the website. Members of the public are invited to come in. If that's a topic that you're passionate about, please come, see the presentation, feel free to say what you like, what you don't like. Maybe we can develop, you know, surveys and things like that based on those meetings. The idea also to potentially have somebody else chair, where I can be more of a complimentary piece rather than the person controlling. But that's still kind of in the works. The goal is to meet again sometime over the summer. To talk with some of the existing members and some members of administration to hammer out. The official kind of framework as to who should be on that committee when we're meeting. And then. Again, like I said, just the goal is to be a lot more like public, out there proactive, to just continue to make sure that we're growing and expanding, but expanding in the way that the. Community is receptive to and wants. We don't wanna work in a vacuum and kind of start to stray away, have people get upset and then have to re. Think what we're doing, so that's where we're at there.
I can chime in, I'd just like to thank you, Nick, for that summary. I think that's a really good job. And Daisy, do you have anything you want to add?
No, he covered it all.
Yeah, of course.
Where, where do requests for. Work or changes or stuff like that go now with other communications? Does it still go to a communication committee, or where's it go?
I mean, I guess technically at this point, it would go to me for now, just cuz that's kind of the process, how it's been. You know, people reach out to me when they notice that something.
So, so if we, for example, wanted to have the agendas and minutes searchable. So that if you wanted to know what was talked about relative to enrollment. You could do a search on the minutes for enrollment and find out what the board discussed about enrollment.
Yeah, I mean, those are all things that we could look at down the line. Like I said, you know, we talked about the first meeting perhaps being website, and again, having these forums. So that people can say, here are the things I like, here are the things I don't like. If one of the topics that comes up, for example, is that I don't. I don't find certain things to be very searchable or user-friendly, we can rework them, get back. Like I said, currently, we technically don't really have a committee, because we're in a transition to a new set. We had a membership of. Thirty people in twenty nineteen that went down to about ten, and now we're lucky if we can get, you know, five people at the meeting. And it's always the same, four to five people, to me, whoever's on the board, a couple other people. So unfortunately, like, we're not really getting productive meetings anyway out of the committee. So that's why we're looking at reformatting, so that we get, we can draw up interest again, and then, like I said, through the forum process. Hopefully get people who are interested in particular categories or topics to speak to that. But to answer your question, if you have a question, concern, whatever, it can be brought up to me. Obviously, I'm the coordinator of communication, so I can. Work on things. For example, you had brought up the idea about. Library resources, and I just did the research independently before we had a committee meeting, and the easy answer is that it's not searchable on our website. Because it doesn't live on our website when it comes to things like agendas and things like that. Unfortunately, part of it is that you're linking. PDFs into a webpage, so it makes it a little bit harder to search through the search function. There are ways to. Potentially change that. The issue is that you might not have things look as. Things might not look as nice, or they might. Kind of be a little bit more broken, I guess, in certain regards, because you also have to make sure that you're adhering to being able to have something. Kind of be a little bit more broken, I guess, in certain regards. Because you also have to make sure that you're adhering to being able to have something present well in both a mobile and a. Website, tablet, everything. Because as it is, we have a lot of, we had a lot of issues with people not being able to search or use the mobile platform on the old website. There's still a lot of work to do in education to get people. To understand, because there's a few things that we can change, but. I can, I can definitely do the research. I can try to see if we can make it more searchable. Like I said, unfortunately, right now, the biggest. Issue is the way that we're linking things in to make it look nice and presentable and that it's easy to find the minutes on the website. It may not be as easy to search the individual words within the PDFs.
Thanks.
It was, there was also, if I can just add to the communication real fast.
If I can.
Um, the. There was a piece of data that you provided, Nick. And it was about viewership of the board meeting itself. Part of what we want is we want to make it sure it's accessible to everyone. And so we know that during. More controversial times, we get a lot of people upwards of two fifty or so. And then we've also been as low as even, you know, not having too many people internally into the building, but also we have like maybe five or six. I don't know how many we have tonight. But, but yeah, so about five, between five and ten is kind of the average. And so. What we do have, however, is then about, was it like twenty or thirty or how many people are viewing the videos after the fact? There are people who are going back to it and watching everything, which is really neat.
Yeah, I mean, on the lowest, on the lowest end, we're probably looking at about thirty to forty people per video on our, on our website regardless of topic. So that includes school board meetings, other presentations. Certain things, if it's maybe a little more contentious, if it's something that people are more interested in, we might get a couple hundred people. So it's.
Awesome.
I just thought that was an interesting piece of data because that's, that's a lot of people.
Well, and like, we still have work to do on the app, but we're looking at about, let me just pull up the actual statistic. We have about seven, six to nine hundred users per month actively on our app right now. So, you know, if you think about every kid having, you know, at least one person that, you know, an adult that would view plus potentially two, three more. You think about every staff member, obviously, that's not a good representation of everybody, but for an app that we've promoted. You know, maybe two or three times and we've had it for less than a year. I'd say that that's a pretty strong and it's shown to slowly go up. So there's obviously a lot more promotion we can do around some of these things, but we have a, we're starting to develop good base pockets. We also have a lot of statistics. A lot deeper statistics through Google Analytics on our websites to show specifically where people are looking, not just, you know, that we have a certain number of people. So we can identify what. Pages and things people are most engaged with. And that breaks down in a per school. So we can say people at JGS really care about this. Well, people at the middle high school really care about that. So we can try to change things as we move forward to better accommodate what people need.
Can I add one thing to the, to the board meetings thing, the committees? Just a promotion for you guys. We got an email very recently from the New Hampshire School Board Association about a board policy development webinar. And I've, I've done similar of these and they're incredibly informative. This one's coming up on Wednesday, this, this coming Wednesday. It's just an hour and a half. But when you register for them, ignore that it says costs thirty dollars. You just go ahead and register and then you get access to the video. So if you can't be there for noon on Wednesday, you get an email saying here's, thank you, here's the stuff. But a policy development from that organization would be extremely valuable for any of us to attend, just to know how this, because I, yeah, I. I don't know if other people say it or not, but apparently policy is really our main job. So that's, it's kind of valuable for everybody, not just the committee to. To, can you email that? No, what's that? Yeah, I can. Yeah, if you did not get it from NHSBA, just raise your hand and I'll email it to you. Or Daisy, raise your hand. Just kidding.
You should have.
Maybe I did.
Next time, this all for.
I can.
Have you guys been receiving all the emails?
I think so, yeah. I get a little, like, I don't know, there's some.
Yeah, we're in a meeting. I can forward this to you.
Okay, wellness, Christine.
Yeah, so we had a meeting. I don't know day it was, but we had a presentation by. The Cornucopia Project. Joe from Food Services attended, which was really great. He had some wonderful input. And so we talked about, John, if you can fill, because I actually missed part of the meeting, you can help me fill in some of this information. I'm looking at the meat minutes. But basically, we had got a presentation from the Cornucopia Project about the ways that they can help. To, and the idea, one of the easy ideas was they were going to contact the school, grade school principals to offer. Free snacks during field days because they had a grant that they had to use up. And Wheeler was going to help coordinate that and I don't know what the final outcome was. They're going to do some snack tastings during field days. We heard about the successes they've had in other schools with school garden programs tying them into curriculum. And Joe has said that in, Food Services had said that when he was at. Previous school, they worked with the school, with their schools gardens. And that he saw that as a very successful program. That's really about what we, we talked about.
Christine, thank you. That was, was a great summary and the, the, the woman from the Cornucopia Project. Really had great input. And we did talk about school gardens. We talked about, as you said, their participation. In field days. I, I think Ann Wheeler was going to try to arrange that at least one of the grade schools.
Yep.
And I'm, I'm not sure if that happened, although I think it did. She also talked about the potential of the, working with extended learning opportunities and. It certainly gives us some, some food for thought and some things to follow up on the coming year. So that was great. And. Thank you, Christine, for setting that up too.
Any other questions for Christine? Okay. Going to public comments too.
All right, for everybody who is with us digitally, again, just wanted to quickly speak to the process. First name, last name, town of residence, before making a public comment, use the hand raised feature at the bottom of your screen so I can acknowledge you. And please adhere to our existing policy on public communication.
Nick? I, I saw the comment just came in on the. The, the chat line from Ann Wheeler. And it looks like the Cornucopia Project is going to be there tomorrow. I don't know if Ann would be willing to get on and just update us about that.
I mean, if she's willing, she's able to. If she's willing, she's able to raise her hand and do that.
Thank you, Ann, for coordinating that. They were going to not just do healthy and locally sourced snacks, but use that as an opportunity to talk to kids about healthy food and healthy food choices.
All right. I'm not noticing anybody.
Not seeing anybody? Okay. All right, let's move on to board matters. Are there any board matters?
Charlie, if I could, I just. What, what Ann put in the chat is our field day is tomorrow and the Cornucopia Project is joining us for an hour in the afternoon. And Ann says that she would love to share what happens after the field day. She's not entirely sure what they will be doing besides what Christine already said.
Okay, thank you, John. Are there any board members, board matters? Okay, if there's no board matters, are there any future items that anyone wants? No future items, okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion to go to non-public for personnel matter.
Yeah. All right, I need, I need a motion to go to.
A motion to go to non-public for a personnel matter.
Second.
So we got all made in at least a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call vote to go into non-public.
Kim.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah.
So, John?
Aye.
Daisy?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Christine?
Aye.
Kim? Lisa?
Aye.
And I say aye.